Testing one more time.
Mine's working.
Mic check. There we go. All right, the time is 6:01. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll move on to number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, now on to item number three, review, revise, and approve the agenda. Any trustee want to move or remove an item on the agenda? Seeing none, I would like to see a motion to approve the agenda as written. Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee Hobins. Any public comment on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor for approving the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous? Not unanimous? How do I always say? That's the one I always say. Just abstention from trustee Sherman. The rest trustees in favor, here. It's always weird for me to say. I gotta figure out my wording for that. All right, now we're on to item number four, approve the minutes. Any trustee would motion to approve August 9, 2022, regular board meeting minutes? Moved by trustee Hobins. Second by trustee Witt. Any board comments? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor for approving the minutes for September, or for August 9? Wait, no. Wait, yeah. Sorry, my, I have two different agendas. A motion to approve September 13 minutes? Okay, this one says August 9. Let me, it's okay. I gotta cross that out. So, let me move back. Trustee, so motion to approve the regular board meetings for September 13, 2022, motioned by trustee Hobins, second by trustee Witt. There was no board comments and no public comment. All those in favor approve in the September 13, 2022 minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. Trustee F. Garrett, Decker, Walker, Andrews, Wallach, Witt, Olperson, and Hobins in favor of? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions, trustee Sherman and trustee Mercer. Minutes approved. Now we're on to number five, public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right to privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Any public comment? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number six. Nicole? Yep, so, this is Nicole, Northwest Regional Prevention Service Program Manager for Flagship, and it's our Community Connection. So, go ahead and please come to the mic.
Okay. Is, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. This is my first time in this new space. It's really nice. Um, so, okay, so I have a, a presentation, oh yeah, that you can see on both sides, so. Are you, Tyler, you, will you kind of click? Okay, awesome, thank you. Okay, sounds good, thank you. Okay, so, um, I feel like I see quite a few familiar faces, so this might be a little redundant, but if it isn't, um, I'm Nicole, and I am with the Flagship Program with Western Montana Mental Health Center. Um, and if you don't know about Flagship, um, it's a community-school partnership that enhances the social and academic, um, uh, cultural and physical achievement of Missoula's youth by creating opportunities that help them succeed and, um, grow, to become healthy and productive adults. And Flagship aspires to develop a community of engaged citizens through healthy relationships and transformative experiences. Flagship provides out-of-school time opportunities for youth in eight Missoula County Public Schools, um, from kindergarten through 12th grade. Under the umbrella of Western Montana Mental Health Center, Flagship offers a school-based program in mentoring and skill-building. And our program focuses on four core components: academic achievement, health and wellness, art and culture, and social-emotional development. Enrollment in Flagship after-school programs is open to all youth at the following schools: at Franklin, Hawthorne, and Russell Elementary, Meadow Hill, Washington, and CS Porter Middle Schools, and Hellgate and Willard High Schools. Flagship is free of charge to all participants and families, and unique to Missoula. With community support, we've sustained this model for 25 years. Flagship provides access, access to activities such as art, engineering, filmmaking, sports, science, gardening, homework help, guitar, role-playing games, and much more in a safe and fun learning environment. Youth in Flagship gain new skills, make friends, and create a connection to school through fun and engaging after-school activities. Through participation in Flagship, youth over time have improved self-esteem, attendance in school and grades, and social-emotional growth. Long-term outcomes for youth through participation in Flagship result in making healthy choices, increased graduation rates, and a stronger community. And this is, uh, it's kind of small to see, but I did bring, uh, real copies for you all too that I can leave. Um, it's our impact report from 2020 to 2021, so it was during COVID. Um, I feel like successes during that year were just being able to sustain the program, have those in-person experiences, but also we provided online and virtual after-school programs as well. But as you can see, Flagship's funded through, um, a variety of different sources, through grants, foundations, donations. It's really a community-supported program. This past summer, Flagship offered 10 camps a week for seven weeks. It was June 13 through July 29, Monday through Friday, at Franklin, Hawthorne, and Russell Elementary Schools, and CS Porter, Meadow Hill, and Washington Middle Schools. We were able to expand our summer camps with expansion funding through the 21st Century Grant and ESAR Grants. And looking, um, at this past year, um, if you didn't know, so, uh, one of our funding sources is a 21st Century Grant that Missoula County Public Schools actually is the, receives the award, and Flagship is the partner. Um, and for those schools, it's at Franklin, Hawthorne, and CS Porter. And at those schools, we offer Flagship, but then also an academic intervention called CORE, where we hire a certified teacher to work with, um, a group of about 15 to 20 kids, um, Monday through Friday, for that more intensive, um, kind of social and emotional support, but also the academic piece as well. But looking at last year, we had 379 unduplicated youth participate in Flagship in CORE. And this past summer, we were able to, um, actually add Russell as one of our 21st Century sites. Um, and we had 349 unduplicated youth participate in camps this summer. And for our non-21st Century sites, which are Washington, Meadow Hill, Hellgate, Willard, and Russell, we had 642 unduplicated youth participate in Flagship last year, and 111, um, at Washington and Meadow Hill. And then just looking at successes, you know, just this past year, as we come out of COVID, um, gosh, just being able to sustain this program for 25 years has been just a huge feat. It's just, um, such an accomplishment. It says so much about our community and about our schools, um, that they believe in this program and, um, and like, it says, the magic truly happens after school, when youth are able to have the opportunity to, um, dive into activities with their friends and being mentored by positive adults. Um, other successes include just adding Russell to the mix. It's been really great to be at that school. Um, we have had some great staff retention. I know you know that, like, having returning staff. Uh, this year has been a, a dream. So, that's been awesome, and just to be able to provide professional development and growth, for sure. Um, and then just our partnership and collaboration with Missoula County Public Schools. I'm just so honored to be a part of this program, but also to be able to work with the principals and teachers at each of the schools. It's, um, definitely a privilege, and, um, we really value that. And just the positive impact Flagship has on so many children and families in Missoula. Um, we have just seen this after 25 years, you know, kids that have gone through the whole program are now at the university and coming back to, um, volunteer and be a part of it and give back to their communities, so, um, yeah, thank you. Oh, and then just the final thing is, um, if you want to learn anymore about our program, um, there's our website. But I just thought I'd also share, um, we put together, we're in the midst of doing our Practice Week and our Volunteer Instructor Training this, um, tomorrow and Thursday, and then programs kind of officially start next week. So, this was a, a video we put together from some of our university students this past summer on just, you know, their experience with Flagship. But you might have to turn it up. We'll see how the volume is.
I have been working with Flagship for about a year now, and it has been such an incredible learning experience for me.
The things I've really enjoyed about working with Flagship are seeing all the community outreach programs that we have, and getting to explore the city more with all the kids, as well as preparing me better for my future career as a teacher.
I was able to see kids' interests grow and change, um, as they were exposed to new opportunities.
It's a perfect after-school program. School is kind of like a safe space for a lot of kids, and I love being able to, like, extend that safe space and give them that space to talk about what they want to talk about and do what they want to do.
I really enjoy Flagship because it's such a diverse group of people, not only the students, but also the staff. Um, and it's such a great, uh, community.
I love learning about them. I also love learning from them, and I just hope people explore this opportunity because it's really special.
So, thank you again for having me. I appreciate it. Any questions or comments?
Any board questions or comments? Trustee Sherman?
I actually have a couple of questions. Um, how do you choose your sites, and then how often, and how do you decide where you're going to expand those sites to?
Hmm, that's a really good question. Um, currently, we're just in eight Missoula County Public Schools, so, um, when we make those decisions about, you know, um, moving to a different school or expanding, it's really working with MCPS, um, administration on that.
Okay, and then, um, so, say you have a kid at Bob Elementary School, just, I don't know all their names, so. Um, and he needs someplace to go. Can he go to one of these, even though that's not his school?
Mm-hmm, that's a really good question, too. Uh, unfortunately, not, no. So, Flagship is open to kids at the schools that we're in, and especially with our 21st Century Schools, um, we keep so much data and information about our program that we have to report on, and so we can only offer it to the kids that are in the schools that we're in. But it's an open enrollment, um, process, so really, Flagship really tries to get as many kids in as possible.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Trustee Hobins?
Hey, Nicole, thank you so much for that, um, sharing with us and everything. I was just curious if, if you're constantly looking for more participation, or if you guys are kind of like, um, have all the students that you want involved, or if, you know, if, if there's room for
Yeah.
kind of more kids to, to participate.
Yeah, that's a great, great question. So, as you could kind of see in our data, like, pre-COVID, I think we were like around 1,500 annually, um, in terms of youth participation, and then during COVID, it dropped down to 640, you know, and then this past year was about up to 1,000 or a little over. And, you know, um, I feel like we cannot meet the need. Like, I definitely feel like, um, there are more kids that want to participate than we have the capacity for, and part of that is, um, kind of a result of the university. You know, like, when their enrollment started changing, so did ours, and so, um, that's something we've been working on this year. Like, we were actually able to get to so many, um, when we do, when we recruit university students, we're out in, at the university doing presentations to get, um, students to participate in the program on that way. But, um, yeah, when, I, I feel like when UM kind of saw their enrollment did, so did ours. It was kind of a direct correlation. And so I think, like, this year has been really uplifting to see, like, how many more students are participating in the program, and how many more volunteers we have, that I have gotten to the point of, like, kind of asking our team, like, okay, this is really great. Like, we're at, because we really try to have, like, three adults to 12 to 15 kids after school. And, like, we're able to meet that at this point this fall, which is awesome. But now I'm like, okay, so let's start thinking, you know, can we add a program potentially, you know, next semester, um, if we can keep that rate up? Yeah, so, but we've been really working with community partners as well. Um, we've been able to, with, like, uh, the expansion funding through 21st Century and ESAR, be able to hire additional staff as well, um, which has been helpful, but, um, yeah, it's kind of been an interesting kind of last couple of years. Yeah. Yeah, great.
Thanks. It's always great to hear about what's going on with Flagship. And, um, I'm curious how people can be supportive of the programs that are happening, and if people are looking for volunteer opportunities, if, like, what that commitment looks like, um, how much time, and what sort of skills people would need?
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, as you saw in the video, there's a QR code, so you can always go to our website and reach out to us that way, um, to get involved. Um, but how that can look, yeah, I mean, really, we ask instructors to volunteer once a week, um, after school, um, but if they can give more, that's great. Um, they really don't have to have an expertise in anything, but if they do, that's always great as well. Um, really, when our team is meeting with potential volunteers, they're kind of doing a screening process, seeing what their interests are, what their availability is, um, and then bringing them in that way. We do provide a Practice Week and a Training as well. Um, so, yeah, so, yeah, we're always looking for more adults to, um, mentor, uh, kids. And then, too, just like, I guess, if we have events or just giving, you know, giving and donating to the program, just to help it sustain itself. Yeah.
Yeah. So, the college kids that come in and help out, um, do they get, like, um, credits, or is this just like a bragging right on their resume?
Yeah.
And do they come from any particular field of study, or do you take them, just come as you are and help out?
Yeah, yeah, great questions. Um, yeah, so, because Flagship has been around for 25 years, it really started with University of Montana and MCPS as its foundation and framework. Um, and so, over time, I think for like the last 15 years, we've had a partnership with the College of Education, where students who are going to become teachers in their Level II field experience actually get their credit and do their service hours in Flagship. So, that's really awesome. We really value that as well. Um, and we have, um, a couple other, like, service-learning partnerships with, um, the Business and Motivational Leadership, which is kind of stepping outside of their realm of becoming business people, but, um, that professor really sees it as a value of, like, expanding their leadership skills. Um, and Health and Human Performance, um, is another one through, I think it's called the College of Health now, um, where they do, um, like, a needs assessment on, with kids to look at, like, health needs and, um, like, what are some barriers or challenges that kids are dealing with, and then kind of implement a project that way. Um, and, yeah, so, just a variety. And we, we present in social work, um, in outdoor rec programs, forestry, um, psychology, yeah, math. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other? Seeing none? Oh, Superintendent Lodge?
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Same goes to you, MCPS, for sure.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good night. Thank you.
So, we'll move on to item number seven, reports and announcements. Item A is the Health Insurance Trust Fund, which is on page 15, June, July, and August Health Insurance Trust Funds. And there is no oral report on that, and so we'll move on to item B, which is announcements from Superintendent Lodge. Over to you.
We're 0 for 2, Brian. I'll, I'll grab this. I got it. That's, yeah, that works. Thank you. Um, a couple, just two announcements tonight. We are going to schedule you board visits to schools, which is always a challenge. You're a tough crew to round up. So, I know, I know. This is all we do, yeah. I know it's your whole life. Um, and we'd like to do it as, as early as we can, so we're going to hit October pretty hard in November. Last year, we always tail into March and April, and we kind of lose our momentum. So, Tracy will be contacting you to set up some board visits, and we'll try and hit all the schools. We have 17, 18, right? Somewhere in that range, and as many of yous could come each time, it'd be great. So, the principal will be there, and we'll talk about the school, and maybe, maybe we can do two or three in, in one day. So, as much as you could clear your schedules and things to participate, that'd be great, but that's coming your way. So, wanted to, uh, share that with you. The other one is I sent you a letter today. I don't know if you saw it in your emails, if you had time to open it up. Senate Bill 99 passed in the last legislative session, and it requires school districts to do more noticing of anything related to, um, units of human sexuality that are taught than we have in the past. So, um, you know, the typical health, HPE, 5th grade through 9th grade, we're, we've done that for a long time, and we've had, we have notice and alternative activities if people would like to opt out. This, this law that was passed in the recent legislatures is more broad, and so it's forcing us, as all school districts, to look in other curriculum areas. And they expanded the definition of human sexuality. You can see it in that letter. So, anything that kind of relates in there, we have to really look at it throughout the year and analyze what might qualify, and then we would have to notice. So, the letter I sent to you is the annual notice. Next year, that will be in the packet, but that serves as the annual notice for the year. And then we're going to, um, we're going to notify parents by mail, seven to 10 days, probably around 10, before a unit is taught. And then again, through Blackboard, 48 hours ahead of time. Not everybody has Blackboard, so we're having to make sure that we really get our logistics squared away. It's kind of a challenging thing to do. But it's what is required of us, so I sent that out to the administrators, sent it out to the community, to you and, and our staff, and I imagine we'll have a few questions. I imagine we'll have a lot of questions. Uh, you know, on October 13th, I'm going to have a Zoom call during our early-out, late-start with the high school, early-out with middle and, and elementary, with all the teachers, and kind of have my ducks in a row of what I want to tell them, with as many clarifying questions as there are comments as I can have at that time. So, we're putting together those kind of cheat sheets for me as well. But you'll probably hear more about Senate Bill 99 this year. It's going to be impactful, and it's going to take some time. I didn't want, as superintendent, to have to put a one more thing on the plate, but we have to. It's a state law, and we need to follow the state law. So, we will be doing that in the next coming months, and you'll probably hear about that. It wouldn't surprise me if you hear about it from some of our constituents. But I, I, as I put in the letter to you, just please remind them that this is a, uh, state law that deals with notice. It doesn't deal with curriculum or teaching some things or not teaching other things. It primarily is notice. So, we'll be working with it and clarifying it as we go. I think we're in the same spot as almost every other school district around, so. I just wanted to share that with you because that will get some attention in the next coming months, for sure. And that's all I had. Sure.
Just a quick question about school visits. I'm sure that you're thinking about this, but just for planning, might we be doing a Sealy, uh, board meeting to go with the visit? We've done that in the past, and it has been helpful at times to, to be able to combine trips, but anyway.
Yeah, I like the idea. I, I don't think we've been to Sealy since I've been here, so it's been on, going on three years now. So, I think a Sealy school board visit would be a good thing to do, and we can work on that if you'd like, as the roads are better than not worse. Sooner the better, maybe, so, we can do that.
I'm sorry, Russ, I was out of town all day, so I didn't get to see the letter. Um, in the notices, is it just pertaining to the notices, or is there some way to address, um, remedies for people who are uncomfortable with the subject matter being taught?
Yeah, it doesn't relate to subject matter. It just relates to notice.
Okay.
So, we have to, um, let people know what we are planning to do within certain timelines.
Okay.
And, um, you know, probably broaden out a little bit into other subject areas, which is new to us. So, we have to analyze those other areas to see what applies, but we will do that, and then we'll notice those areas as well. But it's, it's really notice, and it's not, um, curriculum-related in that regard.
All right, now we'll move on to item number eight. Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to put in a plug for, I don't think it happened last year, and maybe I missed it, but for going to the Adult Learning Center, it's sort of a mystery to me. And, um, and it's a facility, and I guess I would enjoy seeing it.
That's an interesting trip, and you would enjoy seeing it, because what goes on over there is pretty amazing, and, and there's a lot that takes place. But we can make that trip, and we'll add that to the list.
Any more questions or comments? Seeing then. All right, we'll move on to item number eight, the Consent Agenda. In accordance with Board Policy 1420, school board meeting procedure, the board approves the use of Consent Agenda to expedite business at a regular monthly meeting. Agenda items dealing with perfunctuary routine matters may also be placed on the Consent Agenda by Board Chair. Any item on the Consent Agenda may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on a regular agenda upon request of any trustee. So, we have, um, A, Finance, Operation, Maintenance. Topic is Ratify Out-of-District Attendance Agreements and Acknowledge MCPS Student Attendance Agreements. There is no board discussion on the Consent Agenda. Is there any board member who would want to remove an item off from the Consent Agenda? Seeing then, so we'll go ahead and move on to A, it's a secondary-only, so I'll, I need a high school motion for, uh, to approve the Consent Agenda for item A1 and A2. Moved by trustee Wallach, second by trustee Sherman. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor for approving the Consent Agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now we'll move on to item number nine, Old Business. A is Personnel Negotiations and Policy. It's an information-only item, and it's the second read-in of the Revision of Board Policy 2410, High School Graduation Requirements. And we'll go over to Assistant Superintendent Amy Shattuck.
But I'll take it, Amy. Well, you didn't, you didn't know that. This, well, you know, I brought this forward two months ago, and we did a first reading on it. Did some, uh, more research on it and realized we did not need it in policy. It needs to be in procedure. So, really, if you, if you look at the, the last two sentences, the policy will not be brought forward with revisions for a motion for a second reading. Administration has determined policy language shall remain as is, and we'll move forward with a procedure. So, this is just an information item to let you know that we are removing it, uh, from that reading process, and it's going to become a procedure instead. So, just information only. So just information only. Thanks.
Andy told me that. I think so. Okay. So we'll move on to item. Any questions by the board? Seeing then. All right, now we'll move on to item number 10, which is New Business. Approve, A1 is to approve individual transport contact. And it is a high school motion. This was something that was on the previous agenda where we didn't have enough high school trustees to do the business, so I'll pass it over to Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. So our folks that work on the transportation for students is requesting that the board approve the TR4. This is a reimbursement request from the state for a transportation contract, and the reimbursement or the form is attached. And specifically with this contract, it's involving an isolated student, so a student is residing fourteen point two miles beyond the nearest bus stop. Happy to answer any questions.
Any board questions? Trustee Walker Andrews.
Actually, this is sort of a tangential question. We just were approving out-of-district students. In that case, so the students themselves, their families, responsible for their own transportation as opposed to this?
They are. So this is only for students that reside within our district.
Okay.
Point of clarification, do we have any out-of-district students? From what I understand, we don't have any.
We do. We did not accept any out-of-district students this year, but we have some who are grandfathered in. It's not many, and they're kind of working their way through the system. But we were, we had plenty of students this year, so we did not accept any out-of-district.
Trustee Decker.
I'm just assuming that this is the more economical way to do this, rather than extend a bus route fourteen miles?
That's correct, because this is fourteen miles from the nearest bus stop. So in this case, it's, the bus stop is up Highway 12 at Woodman School, so it's beyond that. So that's correct. So it's further from the school than fourteen point two miles.
Just for my own curiosity, do we count from the student's house or from, like, the nearest place where they might be on, like, a regular road? Like, we probably have some pretty remote students whose parents drive them pretty far to get to a bus stop already.
That's correct. So there are already out I-90, low-low, down 93, some pretty remote spots. And we provide a bus stop that, you know, meets the the safety needs of our transportation, and so this is an example of that. And the request is for reimbursement of the county reimbursement rate. We become a pass-through on this one. So it's, the funds flow through us then to the parents, and it's 392 a day is what we're talking about. So that's the request.
Any other questions?
So I guess, I mean, I'm not sure I'm beating around the bush a little bit, but there's a number of bus stops where people need to transport their student to that bus stop. Potomac's another example. So we have a number of kids that transfer in from Hellgate, and they, their nearest bus stop is Potomac. And then they're responsible for getting to that bus stop, and then we take them from there.
I'm so sorry. I guess that's kind of my question, is like, how far from a bus stop must a child be before they could, their parent could be eligible for getting them there?
I think this is the first isolation contract that I've seen, that we've had. And in this case, you're familiar with Highway 12, so there, it's not a neighborhood or a town. It's where the plow resides. So it's a very unique circumstance. I'm not trying to describe it too much detail.
Trustee Mercer.
But I guess that's, so is there a whole segment of parents out there that could be getting this pass-through? I mean, what do you have to be? Do you have to be five miles away, or what is that?
You know, I don't know that there's a standard for that. I looked at the statute, but the isolation is referenced. And so I guess in this case, you can imagine, I can't imagine a situation more extreme from an isolation standpoint where they reside at the location where the plows are held. So that is up Highway 12, the two-lane road. And it's beyond the, I guess, the nearest residential area.
I'm not questioning this at all. I'm just wondering if we should, if there's a group of fifty parents that are driving to Potomac, that we should let them know they can fill out this form and get $300 a year from the state? I mean, that's kind of...
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I think I think it's unique, and whether or not there's standards, yeah, I just, sorry, I can't answer that. I can look into it. But I just know from the transportation folks I talked to, this is the first one that they've seen in a long time.
Vice Chair Hobbins.
So Pat, just to like, kind of piggyback on what the Trustee Mercer was saying, is it, this was initiated by the parents. They came to us saying, we want this reimbursement. So it is possible that there's...
That's correct. Yeah, that was initiated in that manner. And I, yeah, and I looked at the statute, and the, I just don't know the number, or if there is a number, because there is a, what the statute provides for is essentially transportation that exists more than six miles, and that's both ways, outside of your proximity to the school or the bus stop. So the math for it is you are driven ten miles to school. That's one way. You multiply that times two. That's twenty miles both ways. Subtract six miles, which is the transportation boundary, and multiply that by thirty-five cents, and that's the, that's the district-paid reimbursement for somebody. Let's say we didn't have a bus that served a route. That's what we had contracted with parents, to pay them to transport their kid to school. And then the reimbursement is a factor of that, and it's sort of a complicated calculation. But that's a factor of that, that reimbursement amount. So as I understand it with this form, as they work with the state, they plug in the the distance, and then it spits out what the reimbursement amount is on the form. I'm sorry, that's as much as I know.
Any other questions? Seeing none. I'll ask for a high school motion for a recommendation that the trustees approve the TR4 Individual Transportation Contract for the 2022-23 school year. Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, a second. By Vice Chair Hobbins. All in favor for this? All trustees present? Unanimous? All right. Oh, any public comment? I always forget that one. There's no public comment. All right, approved. Okay, now we're on to item number two, which is approve the DPPHS Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity School Reopening Grant. Back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. I didn't come up with that title, but this is, this is the third round of the ELC grants. Our nursing supervisor and I applied for the first round. It was really focused on testing, so we got test kits. This third round, we can apply for, once you expend your prior funds, which we have, or eighty percent of your prior funds, which we have. So we're applying on this third round, and this round is not, is expanded to include more mitigation and prevention strategies. And so it requires board approval for the grant. The grant could be up to $100,000 per district, so the total, we're applying for the full amount for each district, so this is both elementary and secondary. And the, Brooke Crenniger and myself have looked at a number of expenditures, most of which provide some level of relief to the ESAR funds that we're budgeting already, other than from a testing standpoint. So there'll be test kits that'll be part of it, the staffing that we have in place that supports testing will be part of it, and then other mitigation strategies that would include supplies, such as HVAC filters, will be part of it. And filters are not an inexpensive purchase, so that'll be the budget that we'll develop for the grant application. And that application is available from September through March, and so we're just trying to get in front of it as soon as we can.
Any questions? Trustee Mercer.
Just adjacent. Are we planning on doing a booster clinic?
No, not that I know of.
Any questions? Trustee Sherman.
So the testing program here, how does that work?
Yeah, so the any staff and student with permission are able to be tested by our staff for COVID. So it's, and it's free. It's just a mitigation-type strategy to determine if they're positives. And it, I believe it includes the staff and students, and even beyond, for community groups that support the schools. So beach transportation, a contractor who interacts with students, and then other community groups, probably flagship, would all qualify to be tested, all with the idea of mitigating or preventing the spread.
And when did that start?
It started, I believe, two years ago.
Trustee Decker.
If I remember correctly, parents were asked to sign a permission form at the beginning of this school year, or to opt out from being able to be part of that program. So would I be correct that that would be our practice, you know, if this is something that would be continued, parents would always be asked to opt in or out of something like that?
Absolutely, for students, absolutely.
Any other questions? Seeing none. So this is a full-board motion. I would need a trustee to motion a recommendation to approve the ELC grant application. Moved by Vice Chair Hobbins, seconded by Trustee Alf Garris. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now we'll move on to item number, or no, B, Personnel Negotiations and Policies. Oh, did I miss? Oh, number three. My apologies. Number three, approve the usage of ESAR funds for capital expenditure. Back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, so this expenditure is not in excess of the bid limits, but the recommendation from OPI is that we obtain board approval for any capital improvement expenditure, and funded with ESAR. And so this would qualify as that. What we're proposing to do is to improve the AC service at the, in the technology building. This is in our server room. It relates to our expansion of devices and access to the network, all of which roll through that building and that small room. And so this is a capital upgrade. I've spoken with Wendy Farnes at OPI, who's sort of our go-to person and expert on these types of purchases, and discussed the ESAR connection, which she supports, but recommends board approval for this purchase. So we're here asking for the board to approve it.
Any board questions? Seeing none. This is a full-board motion, so I would need a recommendation, or a motion to approve the recommendation to expenditure of the ESAR funds to upgrade the AC and the data center. Moved by Trustee Sherman, seconded by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now we're on to item B, Personnel Negotiations and Policies. And it's over to Vinnie for this one.
Thank you. There's no report out of the ordinary today, just a traditional board report.
All right, so we will do a high school motion that the, we recommend, the administration recommends trustee approval for the items provided under High School Personnel Report. Any final board comments on that? Seeing then, any public comment? Seeing then, so I would need a motion, oh, I forgot that part. A motion first. Motion by Trustee Alf Garris, a second. Trustee Witt. All those, public comment? No public comment? Now we're on to the vote. I'm getting it, you guys. I'll get it. I'll get it soon. All right, all those in favor for approving the Personnel Report, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. All right, now we're on to item 11, which is to, topic A, which is to approve the selection of McPherson and Jacobson LLC to assist with the superintendent's search. Over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, so first I'd like to thank the committee, the team that helped process and make the selection and the recommendation actually to the board. Trustees Witt, Trustee Mercer, Trustee Witcher, who's not here, myself, and Amy and Vinnie were involved in reviewing the proposals and in interviewing the candidates. And we had four, and this is our recommendation, four very qualified candidates, and we're recommending McPherson and Jacobson as the consulting consultant who would assist with the board's superintendent's search. We, just to add to that, the, they're looking for dates to meet with the board, and they proposed the 19th through the 21st. We thought that the earlier, but they would be available earlier, the 4th through the 6th, as options to meet with the board for three to four hours. And timelines, just to get it kicked off, so be something for the board to consider and talk about.
Any questions? Trustees Sherman.
Can I ask what was the number-one thing, the standout thing, that made you choose this firm?
You know, it was, there were a lot of pieces to it, so it'd be tough to identify one. So we scored the proposal, the original written proposal, and some of the submittals were forty pages or more, I want to say. And it was mostly about an evaluation of experience, strength, and processing, and so your proposed scope of services. And then that was thirty percent of our scores. The other thirty percent was price. And then the remaining forty percent was based upon the interview and how best we believed their fit would match with the board and the proposed selection. So that was an opportunity to interact with the consultants who would be directly involved in the search, so that was very helpful, and very much appreciate the time that was given by the trustees to participate.
Do I understand this correctly, that the price still is up for negotiation? Am I reading that right?
The contract is, but the, the price is a not-to-exceed price of $27,000.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. And I should let trustees...
Any other?
I guess for me, this represents our thoughts, that we would like an active search and not merely a passive advertising, and this one was, we thought, the one best able to find, affirmatively find and sell people in the country on us.
And I'll add that, so we did the scoring thing, and it was independent, where we each did that, and we actually submitted our scores before the interview on... did that and we actually submitted our scores before the interview on part of it, which, so no one had any discussions about that. And then we did the interviews and we scored them independently. And then they were compiled. But we had, like, we talked afterwards and we were all in agreement that this was the one that we wanted. There was no one in the room that was saying like, oh, I really, really think it should be this one. We all came to a consensus by the end of this. So I would say it was really a very strong interview that definitely put them over the top. They were in contention anyways, but great interview and enjoyed the, the process they had laid out that would keep us all very involved in picking a superintendent.
Trustee Decker.
Just big, big props and thanks for going through that part of the process, folks that were on the team. It's really like an important piece, but one that I think the whole Board really appreci- I'll speak for myself only and say, I really appreciated not being in that part of it this time around. And really do trust that, you know, you all used a great process, it sounds like, that came to a good recommendation. Appreciate hearing that. The dates that you mentioned, I do want to ask about, because aren't the 20th, 21st, isn't that Mcel days that some of our trustees might be involved with? And so we may, even though it feels very, very soon to talk about those sooner dates, that may actually be an important consideration.
I'll follow up tomorrow and then get back to Russ and to Tracy and we can circulate some dates. Yeah, thanks for reminding me. That's excellent. They had offered Saturdays and Sundays, too, so they would be available.
Trustee Mercer.
I mean, I guess I'd just add that all the candidates, I think, gave us props and said we were in a good position time-wise. I think, you know, this is advertising over the winter, hopefully having it done by January, February, and they all seemed consistent that that was very doable. So, I mean, some timeline to be set, but it all seemed at the head of the line, as one of them put it, so.
Any more questions? Seeing none. This is a full-board motion. I would need a motion that we accept the recommendation to, for the selection of McPherson and Jacobson to assist with the upcoming superintendent's search, subject to the successful negotiation of a contract. Moved by Vice Chair Hobbins, seconded by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any final board comments? Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion on the table, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now we're on to item number 12. But before I do that one, I just want to thank you guys for, for laughing with me and encouraging me through getting through these meetings because this is still very new to me and I will get it. But I just wanted to thank you guys all for, for being here with me while I learned, get off my training wheels. So, item number 12 adjourned and it is 6:53. Have a good evening, everybody.